Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Here.
Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. Messick?
Here.
And Mrs. Gillis.
Mrs. Rigby, here.
Oh, Mrs. Gillis. Mrs. Rigby, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Gillis is here twice. Okay, pledge of allegiance. Mrs. Messick, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is recommended to approve the October 13th, 2025, regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Valentine, second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Messick. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigby?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero. Approval of the regular work session minutes. It's recommended to approve the October 29th, 2025, regular work session minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Gillis, second by Mrs. Messick. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigby?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero. It's recommended to approve this evening's agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Valentine, second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gillis. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigby?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero. Awards and recognitions. Dr. Marchausen.
Mrs. Marple.
Board of Education, Dr. Marchausen, Mr. Kern. It is an honor to recognize the outstanding academic achievements of some of our hard-working students this evening. Joining me tonight are our high school principals, Mr. Tom Cochran, Mr. Matt Perel, Dr. Julie Blevins, and we have Mr. Aaron Bauer, a school counselor here tonight representing Dublin Jerome. This evening, we will recognize our National Merit semifinalists, as well as students who are the first generation in their family to attend college. The National Merit First Generation Recognition Award is a college board program that celebrates high-achieving students from families where no parent has completed a bachelor's degree. To be eligible, students must meet academic criteria based on their PSAT, PSAT 10, or AP exam scores, and they must verify that their parents do not have a bachelor's degree. This recognition is a way for students to share their academic achievements with colleges and as a part of the larger national recognition programs. Students recognized tonight are current seniors who took an eligible administration of college board exams during their sophomore or junior year. They scored in the top 10% of test takers or earned two AP scores of three or higher by their sophomore year. Qualified students are then notified and invited to apply for the recognition. The following students have been awarded recognition for the National First Generation Award. As I call your name, please come forward. Erin Coleman. Leila El Shabrawi. Swarnika Gunde. Mohammed Hassan. Lincoln Kelly. Claire Kingery. Kareem Mukhtar. Erin Ozaken. Akshaya Ruhiroon. Ella Sock. And Kayla Steiner. Congratulations to these students on this outstanding achievement.
This year, 31 Dublin City School students have been named National Merit Scholar semifinalist. Once again, our district has more students receiving this honor than any other district in the state of Ohio. In fact, Dublin City Schools has had the most students receive this distinction in the state for nine of the last 10 years.
The approximately 16,000 semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program were designated for more than 1.3 million program entrants nationwide. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition for some 6,930 National Merit Scholarships worth about $26 million that will be offered this coming spring.
Students entered the competition by taking the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test used by NMSC as an initial screen of entrance. About 90% of the 16,000 semifinalists will advance to the finalist level in the competition. Every finalist will be considered for one of the Merit Scholarship awards offered.
It is from this group of 16,000 finalists that all National Merit Scholarship winners will be chosen. Merit Scholar designees are selected on the basis of their skills, their accomplishments, and potential for success in a rigorous college study. Every finalist will compete for a scholarship that will be awarded on a rolling basis between March and June of 2026.
Students, please come forward as your name is called. Anshula Agola. Miranda Bello. Thanvi Bogala. Lucy Buskin. Anna Chen. Ritav Das. William Davis. Thomas David. Ragava Devanthala. I'm sorry. Devanthala. Darren Ariel Moss. Akash Girish. Sanskriti Gupta. Puniya Gupta. Sanskriti? We'll get it for you. Deandre Herbert. Yi Ming Kong. Arush Madhula. Meghana Madhiraju. Sharanya Mishra. Ria Oja. Albert Parapuza. Justin Park. Druthe Pyla. Isol Shim. Sophia Sturgeon. Lauren Toth. Jack Turk. Graham Tyler. Vijay Ragav Varadarajan. Brandon Wong. Henry Wong. Sasha Joe. Congratulations to all of these amazing students for this outstanding achievement. We are thankful for their families for supporting their academic endeavors and to our teachers and administrators for the academic guidance and support they have provided to these students. Let's give these students a final round of applause.
Mr. Boni.
Good evening, everyone. The Golden Shamrock, the Golden Shamrock Award started in 1990. It was founded by Ed Pitnacki, an active community member in Dublin, as well as business owner. This award was created to recognize staff members in our district who have made outstanding contributions and have had a significant impact through the work they do each and every day. Tonight, we have two award winners, and at this time, I'd like to ask Brooke Mendoney to come to the podium to say a few words about her first award winner, Michelle Downing.
Shelley, do you want to join me as well? Come on up. Members of the Board, Dr. Marchausen, Mr. Kern, I'm really excited to be here tonight and talk about Ms. Shelley Downing. Shelley Downing joined Dublin City Schools in 1997, and we were fortunate enough to have her join our CAR staff in 2021. From the moment she arrived at the middle school level, it was clear that Mrs. Downing had a way with bringing out the best in people. Staff shared that Shelley brightens people's days, makes everyone feel included, and is such a big part of the CAR family. It wasn't long before she made her mark with parents and students singing her praises. One parent writes, "Shelley showed my son the value of learning. He would say that she is nice, but also that she makes him work hard. She communicated very well with our family." Countless students, past and present, also nominated Mrs. Downing for this well-deserved award. Over and over, they shared that Shelley will support you no matter what. She works hard to make sure everyone understands what's going on in class, and if you don't, she will redo something so you can understand it. Another student wrote, "I always feel safe and encouraged to be myself in your class." In addition to being an intervention specialist, Shelley has helped to co-reestablish our CAR cheerleading squad into something magnificent the past few years. With too many quotes here to share, I will give you an example of the impact that Shelley has. As one student writes, "She treats every single kid like a person, and she makes everyone feel like they belong. I had the most fun on her cheer team ever, and I wish I could have her every year. Thank you, Mrs. Downing, for all you do daily to support our students and our staff." I can't say it as well as some of the students that are saying it, so I'll end with this. She is hard-working and wants to be the best possible version of herself. She puts in the work needed to get the outcome that she wants, and she is so, so deserving of this award. Congratulations, Shelley.
I won't speak long. First, I would like to thank the committee, Dr. Marchausen, and the Board members for this humbling award that Dublin City Schools is, because Dublin City Schools is such an outstanding place to work and live, thanks to the work that you all put in. Second, thank you to my administration at CAR, Brooke and Joe. Thank you for supporting me and leading me through the change of moving from two decades of teaching at the elementary level to embracing and loving the secondary world of middle school. You have allowed me to showcase my ability to build relationships with students, families, and colleagues. Thank you to other administrators that I have had the pleasure of working with over the past 28 years. To the colleagues and coworkers I have had the privilege of working with throughout my career in Dublin City Schools, I am deeply grateful for your support, collaboration, and friendship, which have made this journey so meaningful and invaluable to me. My husband and I moved our family here to Dublin to be a part of this amazing community and raised our two daughters here, who grew up attending K-12 schools and both proudly graduated from Dublin-Seyota High School. And this is because of the amazing staff throughout this district. To my family, I thank you for supporting me in this amazing career I am lucky to have. You have stood behind me and allowed me to get completely immersed in the students and families I work with and have even attended school functions with me for people you don't even know. You have cheered me on in every aspect of this career, and I'm so grateful. But lastly and most importantly, I would like to thank the students and families who have been a part of my journey. Over 28 years, I have gotten to know and worked with so many Dublin families and students who have all meant so much to me, and it is because of them that I love this job and the journey it has taken me on. So again, thank you so much.
And for our next award, I'd like to invite Ms. Jacqueline Pallone to the podium to present the next award to Tiffany Workman.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the Board for having us here this evening, and we really can clear a room, so. This evening, it is a true honor to discuss this award for Tiffany Workman. Tiffany is more than an exceptional first-grade teacher. She is a quiet force of care, dedication, and joy in our school. Her daily work teaching children to read, leading focused small-group instruction, and using data to guide growth is nothing short of impressive. She plans carefully, works tirelessly, and believes deeply in what her students can become. But what sets Tiffany apart is the way that she connects with each child. She sees them as whole people, noticing the small details, listening to when they need to be heard, and showing up for them in ways that matter. More than once, Tiffany has stayed late after school to make sure a child was safe, comforted, and well-cared for, putting their needs above her own. Those moments of devotion are the kind of quiet heroism that change lives. She goes above and beyond to meet their needs, and that love is returned. Former students come back to visit because Tiffany's classroom stayed in their hearts. Recently, one of those students returned through our DTA program, the Dublin Teachers Academy, a beautiful reminder of the lasting impact that she creates. Tiffany, thank you for your tireless work, your steady heart, and the safe, joyful place you build every child who walks through your door. You change lives every single day, and we are deeply grateful. Congratulations.
I'm truly honored to receive this award tonight. I have wanted to be a teacher since I was in the first grade. I was lucky enough to have a teacher who made school a place I couldn't wait to be every single day and made every student feel seen. And from that moment, I knew I wanted to do the same for others someday. For me, teaching has always been about relationships. It's about connection, growth, learning their personalities, strengths, and dreams. From those small moments of receiving 20 student drawings a day and unexpected hugs to the moment when a student realizes they're reading for the first time, or the former students who come back just to say hello. Those moments are what I reflect on as I accept this award. Teaching hasn't just given me amazing students. It's also given me lifelong friends and a work family I'm so grateful for. I honestly wouldn't be half the teacher I am today if it weren't for all of them. Thank you to the district and everyone who supports our teachers and our schools. This means more to me than you know, and I'm grateful to be part of the strong community that is Dublin City Schools. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to presentations. I believe we have Mr. Melody here with a TOELS update. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Marchausen. It's always tough to follow all those recognitions, so hopefully my report is thrilling for you. Starting off with enrollment, currently, we have 1,215 students enrolled at TOELS this year. This includes 113 senior and the senior only or single-year programs. The construction update is attached, the weekly construction update. Currently, we are on track for a December of '26 opening, so a little over a year away. So a lot of hard work and planning, and it's finally progressing along. I look forward to November 20th through the 25th in about two weeks. This is when we open up the doors to our prospective sophomores who can come and investigate their programs. They can attend one, two, or three programs if they're interested. And if they're interested, they can start submitting applications on December 4th. So applications are coming up soon. And then, just a call-out for the Maria Tiberi Foundation. Back in 2021, TOELS received 25 state-of-the-art driving simulators. And every year, we have all of our students take 10 modules through those simulators so they have safe driving habits. This year, over 1,200 students will complete that program. And this gets them on the road for all their programs and hopefully safely to where they're going. And then finally, adult education. Couple of weeks ago, we received accreditation for, national accreditation, for the Adult Education Program, reflecting the quality and rigor of our training. Currently, we offer electrical, HVAC, multi-craft maintenance, firefighting and EMT, metal arc welding, and state-tested nursing assistance. And we are always looking at expanding the Adult Education Program. Now that we have that accreditation, we can continue to develop and make new offerings. And then, finally, a call-out, a little early here, but Wednesday, November, or Wednesday, April 22nd, is the Annual School Board Appreciation Dinner, where we open up the doors to all of our associate districts and invite you out for a dinner prepared by the culinary students. It's always a fun time to meet the students and have a great meal. And then there's a couple of other attachments, the November enrollment update, the weekly construction update, and then advocacy town hall on November 12th with Senator Kohler. And then later on the agenda, thank you for your consideration and support for reappointing me as the Dublin representative to the TOELS Board of Education. So if you have any questions, please let me know. All right.
Scott, thank you for your willingness to serve for an additional three years as our representative to the TOELS Board. I think it's incredibly valuable in a position that used to be one of the local board members, but in recognition of all the time is serving on multiple boards. Your willingness as a former member of this board to serve our community as a member of TOELS Board is great, and we appreciate you doing that so much. So thank you for your time in serving another three years.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Scott. Moving on, we have no one signed up for public participation for action items on the agenda, so we will move on to Board Committee reports. Does anybody have anything from their committees?
We had key communicators on the 5th of November, and the main focus of that meeting was why we pressed pause and going through what comes next and what type of data that we would like to see for redistricting. But it was mainly just a debrief session over what all transpired.
There are no other committee reports. We will move on to our student representative, Nancy.
Oh, yay. Okay. Good evening, Board. We have many updates from our four high schools, so get ready. From Kaufman, they are currently having their Red Cross Annual Blood Drive on Wednesday. And they also have a sophomore field trip to TOELS coming up on November the 24th, so they get to just look at TOELS and see what opportunities are available. The African Library Project is starting up on the 12th. This helps donate books to libraries in Malawi. I don't know if I'm saying that right, but Africa and just helping kids in need in general. So that's a really great project in the works. Looking at Jerome, so we actually administered surveys to my peers at Jerome. We found a lot of common threads, which we hope to address quickly and efficiently, and I hopefully will be doing that just by meeting with Mr. Arn and getting clarity on a lot of issues and how we can fix those. Another survey is in the works to focus on, again, bridging the gaps between the administration and students and making sure that all the students are being heard in general. Today, the Boys Soccer Division One State Championship at the Historic Crew Stadium. Go Celts. Veterans Day on, or tomorrow. And we're just talking about the significance within the classroom, and we also have our Veterans Day Drive, which is going really well to help all veterans in need. Yeah, that's a really, really powerful project in the works. The Jerome Theater Department presents The Wind in the Willows on November 20th and 22nd. So if you guys find some free time, I know you guys, none of you must have free time with all the work you guys are doing, but. with all the work you guys are doing, but maybe pop up at Jerome. And then our wonderful Dublin Jerome PTO has a fundraiser selling flowers, greenery, that make great gifts for the holidays. I know I forget to get my mom a gift, so definitely I should go to the PTO. At Sciota, so the Sciota Purple Star Club finished hosting the Veterans Story Event, which celebrated and shares the stories of veterans in the community. Again, just restating how important our veterans are and how they need to be appreciated in our community. And then Sciota Red Cross Club will have their annual blood drive at Sciota tomorrow, actually. And then November 18th will be the induction ceremony for NHS, which is a really great honor. Looks great on Common App, I know that for sure. December 6th will be the Sciota's Craft Fair. And then just lastly, for Emerald Campus, they're having an international Baccarat students. They're hosting a We Help To Sock fundraiser with a mission that stretches across the globe and right here in Dublin. And by purchasing fond and cozy socks, you'll support education for a student in Uganda and providing socks for local families through one Dublin's free community shop. And then you will also be supporting initiatives at Emerald Campus, and their goal is to sell 190 packs of socks. And if you have any more questions, please talk to a seal. She'll be more than willing to talk to you about it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Nancy. Moving on to reports and action items from the superintendent's office, Dr. Marshausen.
Thank you. As we get started tonight, you may notice that Dr. Schwanke isn't with us. She is at Historic Crew Stadium representing our central office team as the Jerome Boys take on St. Ignatius in the state title game that'll start in about half an hour. Nothing like soccer when it's 28 degrees outside on a cold windy night. So good luck to our boys over at Jerome. Also, if you had seen in earlier agenda, we were scheduled to celebrate our state champion boys and girls golf teams from Jerome. They'll be joining that soccer team at the meeting in December, and we'll recognize and celebrate those state champs, hopefully more of them as we get together in December for that last event. Also, and it was mentioned in the students' report, I love the way Ohio celebrates Veterans Day because by having schools specifically put on programs to teach our young people about veterans. And we've got multiple Purple Star Schools now and what our students at Sciota do as part of that program with Mr. Witt. We really get an opportunity to celebrate and talk about our veterans rather than kids just having a day off. So kudos to our state who years ago put this as part of the curriculum, put this as part of law. And as I get to go around our schools last week and this week and see what we're able to do and having veterans come in and talk to our students, it truly does give us an opportunity to pass on that importance and celebrate those who fought to protect our country. So it's a really great program and so proud of the work all of our teachers do to prepare students and teach our students. We'd like to welcome Mrs. McLean and Mrs. Seward to our Board of Education. Elizabeth, thank you for being here and congratulations. And welcome back, Mrs. De Silva. Mrs. De Silva, as we talk about sports awards, is celebrating her daughter's accomplishments tonight and is, as we always say, putting family first. And that's what we want our employees and our board members to be able to do. We will have new board member orientation in December where our team will meet with our new board members, introduce ourselves, talk about our programs, contact, how we contact each other. And then we will plan a board retreat for early in 2026. This board's going to have some pretty weighty issues to tackle early in our board calendar. As we look at school funding and the five-year forecast and where we're going with financial decisions, huge issues, big decisions coming our way, and also to put together the focus and timeline to relaunch our redistricting process. So I would anticipate a board retreat in January to start to set those goals and put those things in motion for the next school calendar year. Also, Mrs. De Silva is the board's designee to the Ohio Capitol Conference, OSBA's annual convening of school board members from across the state. This will take place starting next Sunday through Wednesday. We have multiple members of our team who give presentations there. And as part of my work on the Governor's Property Tax Work Group, I get to be part of a keynote panel discussion at the Alliance for High Quality Education's annual luncheon. So I get to sit with Bill Seitz, which for those of you who know Senator Seitz, I won't get to talk a lot. But we'll be on that panel talking about school funding at the Alliance Luncheon. I am proud of the work that that work group did. We are seeing specific recommendations from the Governor's Property Tax Work Group get turned into legislation. House Bill 186 puts a cap on the 20 mil floor for those districts, but there's been an amendment to it which actually goes over and above what the committee recommended, and that's to hold districts harmless in the upcoming fiscal year as that bill works through the General Assembly. Also, House Bill 335, which puts a cap on inside millage as that works its way through the General Assembly. If you want to read some of the additional legislation that has been proposed, House Bill 156, the success sequence, is making its way through the General Assembly. And then finally, our very own Senator Brenner introduced Senate Bill 93, which would eliminate local property taxes to fund schools, increase the sales tax, and fund students on a per pupil basis regardless of whether they attend public schools or private schools. So there are a lot of different pieces of legislation working their way through. Generally, what happens is there'll be some sort of Christmas tree bill that will make its way through the GA around Thanksgiving time to get approved at the end of the calendar year. So we'll keep an eye on that. We have lobbyists in all of the organizations, plus the Ohio School Boards Association, keeping an eye on all of these things. And we'll continue to be in contact with our legislators. The concern with those Christmas tree bills is not everything gets a full hearing. So there are things that will get put in a conference committee at the end, and then all of a sudden, boom, you have a law. So we'll keep an eye on those pieces of legislation as well. For this board to discuss, we've gone through a lot of different iterations in how we've handled public participation. We have a 12-hour notice. I would like to propose that as we go into a new board calendar year and as we're going to have the need for consistency as we reengage in finance and we reengage in the redistricting process, our board policy clearly outlines a specific way in which we can do public participation. And that would be all of our meetings are considered regular meetings again. We'll stop differentiating between work sessions and business meetings. Three minutes per speaker, they can come up to the podium and share their thoughts for three minutes. And then our board policy says 30 minutes at each meeting for public participation. Also, as part of this then, we would return to quarterly coffees that would allow for more engagement and conversation as we move forward. I think it's become clear that in times when things are relatively calm, it's great to be able to have the conversations here in the board format and be able to have those discussions. In times when things get a little bit more uncertain and emotions are high, I think those meetings have potential to be less productive and to take us off task from the work that we do. So I'm asking the five or four of you, are you okay in December where we only have one meeting and returning to the three minutes per speaker? Having that 30 minutes set aside on the agenda, and if there are 10 people who want to talk, then the 10 people who, before the meeting, let us know, and we'll move forward with that. Your reaction, your thoughts, they're your meetings. So I was just kind of uncomfortable with where we've been and how the process has gone over the last couple of months.
If nobody signs up 12 hours in advance, will you let people sign up the night of? Or is it an absolute 12-hour notice?
A lot of that would fall on the chair when it comes to how public participation would be handled. Mr. Valentine, you've done this multiple different ways now over 22 years serving on the board. Would my assessment of it would fall on the chair to make that decision? Be consistent with what you've experienced.
Yeah, I probably, I mean, if I were sitting in the chair or I'm just speaking as a board member, I would allow folks if they showed up. I mean, that would be my personal take, but I think it's probably a bigger discussion, obviously, than just myself. In the past, I always erred on the side of leniency for obvious reasons. But, I mean, returning to this, it ebbs and flows. I mean, like, no matter what we do, it can be taken in the wrong direction that we're... When we switched to the current format, it was we were trying to limit things. Now we're switching back to this, and now it could be that we're trying to limit things. I don't think it's necessarily that. When I say limit things, obviously because there's not going to be the back-and-forth communication that maybe we've had at the second meeting of each month. But it does open the door of opportunity. I think that there is a part of the public that definitely doesn't quite understand the process of public participation, and it makes it a little bit more lenient and flexible for people to show up and speak. At the same time, I think that whoever is board president is just going to need to make sure that now that we open it back up, that there's somewhat guardrails on it. Because in the past, we ran into those issues where speaking longer than three minutes and essentially dominating the meeting comes into play, and we're not able to have some of the presentations or discussions or things that we regularly would have with a dedicated time.
Another question that I have is will it, will participation only be allowed for things that are on the board agenda? Or would it be open to anything?
If we're going back to what we were previously, we had, the front end was always on the agenda, and then the back end of the meeting had the items not on the agenda. And I'm assuming that that would be the case if we were reverting back to...
It would just be 30 minutes, we could decide where we wanted to put it.
And so essentially what we ended up doing, Amy, was a very rarely did we separate those two. I think that was past practice. We essentially lumped everything and just pulled it all into the front end, which I would recommend that we do as well. There's no reason for people to sit around two hours until the end.
It's one of those conversations that, like, boards have. Do you put it at the end so people have to hear the whole meeting? Or do you put it at the beginning and then everybody leaves when it's over?
And there's relevancy, just to go to that. I think that there is an important part to note with that because many times, public will come to speak on certain things, and we're planning to talk about it or there's a presentation on it. And many of the questions that they have or statements that they have, there could be clarification or additional information that is able to be seen. So I do think it's worth discussing where it falls potentially on the agenda, not necessarily at the back end, but if we're going to have present... It's worth discussing having it after section of presentations or superintendent's reports or whatever the case may be.
Thank you for your expertise.
Experience? Okay. Anything else for members of the board for me? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to reports and action items from the...
There's an action item for me.
We do have an action item. And this is the approval for a resolution for our TOELS Career and Technical Representative. So it's recommended by the superintendent that the board approves the attached resolution naming Mr. Scott Melody as the TOELS Career and Technical Representative from Dublin City Schools. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Valentine, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Messick. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigby?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero. Now we'll move on to reports and action items from the treasurer's office. Mr. Kern?
Yes, we have a few things on the agenda for this evening. We have donations here for classroom supplies from the DEPT PTO to DEPT teachers to be able to use, and then from BGSU as part of the College Football Playoff Foundation Extra Year for Teachers Program to Indian Run L Menchery to use for classroom supplies. We do have appropriation changes this evening. And this one may look a little weird, but with the changes in the state budget this past summer and the five-year forecast and stuff, it is recommended through our, that we tie our appropriations to our five-year forecast. And so what this does is the changes from what was originally approved at the end of June meeting for 2026 appropriations for the general fund, which for all other funds, we appropriate our budget at a fund level. We do, at the general fund, we budget at or appropriate at the object level. And the object level, for example, would be salaries and wages, benefits, purchase service, supplies, et cetera. So these changes now reflect the changes from our budget that was approved in June to match our five-year forecast that we presented. It was approved on October 13th. And then lastly, on this evening's also is our financial report for October. As you can see from the general fund perspective, we are online with estimates at this point in the year, and we'll continue to monitor as we go forward.
Any questions from the board? Okay, if not, it is recommended by the treasurer to approve items 7B through 7D. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Gillis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Valentine. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigby?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero. Reports from the Department of Academics and Student Learning, Mrs. Marple.
Good evening. We have two items for you tonight. The first is a review of the middle school and high school academic programs and pathways. This is a first read, a second reading, and vote would occur in the December meeting. So I'm going to give you a brief overview of first, our process, and then I'll start with high school and then follow up with middle school proposed changes. One of the things I'd like to highlight is that the feedback cycle for academic programs in Dublin City Schools never ends. It's constant. So we do collect feedback during our curriculum review. Our principals also are talking regularly to teachers and departments. And so I collaborate closely with my department and the 612 principals in alignment with their teacher input so that we make sure we're hearing all the things that go into academic programs. We make sure that we include central office input. Some of those groups that we solicit feedback from are listed, but it's often more than that. And whenever possible, we make sure we consider some student input, community input, and we always are monitoring our enrollment data to make sure that the decisions that we're making align with student requests for courses at secondary. A good example of student input, I had an opportunity to talk a little bit with our superintendent student advisory council a couple, maybe that was like a month ago now. And they gave some great input regarding ELA electives and helped us solidify some decisions that we were still going back and forth on. So making sure that we pause every once in a while and listen to the students is very important. Our next steps, starting tomorrow, members of my team will be out in the secondary schools to review changes. We meet with admin teams and counseling teams to go over the changes, make sure everybody's clear on what's being proposed. They have no action then until after the board vote in December. But we have to start now kind of pre-thinking and scheduling, planning for scheduling. And then after the first of the year, we will work to gather any teacher curriculum teams at middle school and high school that are necessary in the case that any graded course of study need to be developed. And there are a few cases of that this year. And then just to remind the board, those come to you in the spring for approval, and that also takes two reads. So let's start with high school. So let's start with high school. I'll start here at Emerald Campus. We are excited about some ideas that are brewing around what we're calling an Associate's Academy. It's actually not new internal programming. Jen Hinderer, Dr. Marchausen, and Columbus State have been collaborating to think about how we can help students better think about what they're taking with CCP, and in many cases, when appropriate, get an associate's degree by using the work they're already doing. So I'm thinking about this in the initial year as personalized advisement for our students. They would be taking some of our current CCP offerings and then having an opportunity to think about how those connect with what they might be interested in to make sure they're getting the most out of that. Our two academies that we brought in-house this year, we have updated the academic programs for those. That is our former Media Marketing Academy, now called Media Production Academy. There is some really exciting work happening in this building around that. And it's now taught by a Dublin City Schools teacher. And DBA is going to have some C-Tags added into that program, and you'll see that C-Tags are updated throughout. As you know, there was new legislation where C-Tag coursework is now weighted coursework as a 5.0, and so we've updated the academic programs with all of those. Entrepreneur Academy, we made some small changes to the number of courses taken. Although the Capstone course was removed, we really rolled those credits into the Strategic Entrepreneurship class, mostly because it's all integrated and hard to separate out into two different courses for teacher management. So we're streamlining that. Really excited about Engineering Academy. This was ready for a refresh. We have Julie Blevins here at Emerald Campus and Jen Hinderer have been working closely with our teachers who are phenomenal. And we are excited about having a partnership now with University of Cincinnati. So you can see that reflected here. And then Cyber and Information Technology Academy. You may recall, we used to have a cyber academy and an IT academy. We've rolled those into one. And that really happened through the uncoupling of some of those academies at TOEFLs naturally. And so we're really just articulating what's actually happening for that, for students. And then you'll see University of Cincinnati partnership again with an updated biomedical academy. We hadn't looked at that academy in a long time, and we're really excited about potential refreshes that can happen through that partnership. And then you will see some small changes that, when we do Columbus State programming, it requires us to be in touch with them and really just stay on top of the changes that Columbus State is making. So these were changes that came from Columbus State into our Healthcare Professionals Academy, which is constantly evolving. Now I'll switch over to the main high school programming. We anticipated that we would be phasing out workforce-ready. This year, Dublin Co-op came in, and so now that phase-out is complete. We have adjusted the prerequisites for AP Computer Science Principles and AP Computer Science A. We actually reduced them. We want to give more access, and the teachers feel as though this aligns us better with College Board. And you're going to hear a couple other updates relating to College Board. We really worked hard to align our prerequisites to what College Board recommends. In some cases, we had higher prerequisites, and in other cases, we had lower prerequisites. And so we spent some time auditing that to make sure that we're reflecting the most current curriculum that College Board offers. This next one, I want to take a moment to talk a little bit about. Over the last few years, we have seen a huge increase of students taking CCP courses through Columbus State. Some on campus and some online. One of the things that we're hearing from our buildings is that some of the students who are taking it online really need more support. Yes, they're signing up for a college class, but taking it online with a professor who doesn't know you and having no one to reach out to isn't always what's best for every student for that first college experience. And we have a couple of teachers who, as part of an ESC grant, are involved in some coursework to get the right credentialing to be CCP certified. So next year, we would like to have an in-person pilot. We're thinking probably just one or two sections of that Comp One at Columbus State taught in a building. And it will have to cap it. I'm thinking that we'll probably have more interest than what we're able to do in year one. But the idea is, let's see if there is interest to pull some of the students who are doing it online in with a teacher, and then they would be able to take that class every day of the week and have that extra teacher support in-house. A lot of districts do this. In fact, we used to do this when CCP first came on. Then we backed out of that. We have our Early College Academy downstairs. But we are seeing, just to give you some numbers, just this semester, I can't speak to next semester yet because we don't know until the students register for classes. We have one hundred and thirty-five students at Jerome taking online comp. We have forty-three at Kaufman and fifty-three at Sciota. So that's a large chunk of juniors and seniors taking that online class. And that is after some of them have tried it, dropped it, and come into one of our English classes. So that's what we've been thinking with our principals about, is how can we reduce the number of drops, get the right supports in place for kids, because we know they can be successful and that college writing is an important skill for them to acquire while they're here with us. At this point, we do plan to have that pilot at Jerome High School because they do have the most students that we could pull for a pilot with the intent that it would expand, if it's successful, that we would expand it to the three high schools next year. Right now, we aren't thinking this would be an Emerald Campus program. We are thinking this would be at the three high schools. We also have some changes in the ELA. As more students have gone to different ELA options, we've been tracking our enrollment. So enrollment has really driven this decision to reduce our elective options from eight to five and be more targeted in those. The only brand-new one there is mythology, which students were very, very vocal about in their student survey, which I don't know if that surprises you or not, but I had a chance to talk to some students. And so we're going to see how that goes for students. It's just a semester elective at this point. Writer's Studio is really us condensing what was creative writing and then writing for publication, one and two, which is the school paper. So that will come together into a writer's studio where they will, as part of that course, have choices of creating content for school publications, but not limited to that. And then we had two, we had a speech class and a debate class, and we are condensing those. The numbers haven't been high enough to run both all the time. We dropped yearbook two. We will have yearbooks still, and it will be repeatable. Students could take it multiple years if that's a passion for them. And then I just showed on the slide that that fifth semester option is nothing new, but I just didn't want to leave it off after saying we had five. So that ACT/SAT prep class does still exist. Most students actually take that online, not in person, through our DCS virtual. Next year, we are starting to make some small adjustments to our English learning programming. At this point, we will be double, right now, students sit for two high school classes back-to-back. Next year, we're going to separate those into two separate course numbers. One focused on English language development and the other one focused on English ELA outcomes. This is going to be just a first step of a multi-year plan to really think about some of the feedback we were given regarding our EL program and tool up our teachers in those two areas to make sure that we have some flexibility for students as they are gaining their skill and exiting into our core ELA classrooms. In science, another big change for high school. We are one of the only districts that continues to just blanket double-block all of our science AP classes. We actually are over, well, over, the College Board's seat time recommendation. So Christina Hutchison, as a part of the Science Curriculum Review, has been working with our high school science teachers and talking about this. There's still one class that will remain as a double-block with a separate lab and class time, and that is AP Physics C. That class actually teaches two courses' worth of content. So this will firm up, while doing this, we will also firm up the prerequisites. So because it was a double-block, sometimes students that didn't have the prerequisites were allowed into the class because there was twice as much time, you know, to backfill that content. With that shoring up to a single block, students will be asked to have the College Board prerequisites before taking that class. And then finally, you knew the next one was coming. I shouldn't say finally. I have two more after that. We had condensed the IB Sports class, and so we need to get that year two. We had referenced it last year, and year two of HL is coming. With Visual Arts, you'll see a small name change, of course, just to clarify. Sometimes there's confusion that Advanced Photography is an honors class, and it's not. It was just like two opportunities to take Photography, so we tried to clarify that. And then now that we are in a good routine and process and have gotten clarity from the state regarding the process for Governor's Merit Scholarship, we went ahead and added that to the academic distinctions so that people know as they're planning that that is a thing in the state of Ohio. So that's high school. Why don't I pause for any, just check with you all to see if there's any immediate questions regarding high school? I know this is only a first read, and just to remind you, I welcome questions as you process, because it's a lot to process.
For the double-block sciences that are now being, going down to a single, were they meeting two periods every single day, or were they doing one period, two periods? Having a study hall?
No, that course, those courses were meeting for four mods, which is what you're probably thinking of, two periods every day.
Okay, wow.
Okay. I'm going to keep moving and overview the changes at middle school. Fewer changes this year at middle school. You'll see, actually, arranging the two English learning classes at middle school into two separate courses is in practice. They don't always schedule them back-to-back already at middle school. They do whenever possible, but we just articulated that in the student programs book, so it's clear that they won't always be back-to-back. But once again, you'll see that theme again of language development and English content. If we want our English learners to exit, we have to make sure that they're getting access to that grade-level content. And they are, and we just want to make sure that they're getting the minutes in both spaces and that we have, that we're clear about what that double-block that students are spending time doing. We did update course descriptions in some places, and you have some details in front of you. But most of it was like clerical of clarifying or clarifying the description that's already in place. We did add a little bit of language about fifth-grade strings. As our district grows, we do have a growing number of students engaging in this program. And we only have so many open first periods at the middle school to house those students who come before elementary school starts. So as we're starting to kind of creep up on our capacity, we want to be clear with families that there is a capacity there to that program. We haven't had to use that in the past. You will now see Video and Communications in grades six, seven, and eight. We'll be working with our middle schools to vertically align those, and you'll see that the course descriptions kind of show how it will evolve from six to seven and eight. But when we pull a curriculum team together, we'll really dig into the details of that. Additionally, I should add that buildings have autonomy with that. If it works, that those students could be contributors to their school news show. Of course, they could use that class and those students as contributors if they see fit and it works in their program. And then you can see at sixth grade, Modern Literacy, we've received a lot of feedback about the course needing an update. We made one attempt at an update a couple years ago. You approved a new graded course of study. Now with AI on the scene, I think there's a chance for us to revisit that for sure. And so we'll pull a curriculum team together. But one thing that we know is so important in sixth grade and all grades is digital citizenship. So we really call it what we want it to be, which is a focus on being a digital citizen. It's something I hear from parents about that is very important, that kids understand their digital footprint, both with what they're doing in school, but also in the world. So we'll be working on that curriculum to give it a refresh for sixth grade. And then Leadership and Service is going to fall out of sixth grade. You might recall that last year, when we unblocked that sixth-grade ELA experience, we moved some of the electives from seventh grade into sixth grade. I would say this is one that we learned wasn't right for sixth grade. It sounds, from the buildings, that it's better, it takes a different maturity than maybe our sixth graders come in with, and so it's better fit at seventh grade. So it will remain at seventh grade. And it will be replaced by something that we're calling Writing in the Digital Age, which is an opportunity for students to dig in to understanding their Chromebook, their LMS, through a lens of writing, starting to really upscale with their Google tools to make sure that they're set up with some of those executive functioning pieces that are necessary for success as new middle schoolers. So just to clarify, that becoming a digital citizen will be for all students. That's one of those that every sixth grader takes. The Writing in the Digital Age will be a choice where students could select it as one of their elective options. You'll notice that at both sixth and seventh, we've removed the trimester study center choice. The study center option at middle school remains on the A-Day, B-Day. When students need an additional time for intervention, that will be handled, not through scheduling, but more made by building teams with parents. At seventh grade, this year, we have global studies in both sixth and seventh as it transitioned down to sixth grade. But we don't want students to repeat that class. So this cohort of sixth graders that's moving up needed a new option. So this World Traveler VII will be a dive into the five languages that students can select in eighth grade to give them exposure to the cultures and the etiquette and the language that they might choose to take on in eighth or ninth grade. In Digital Literacies, we're updating artificial intelligence into that as it aligns closely with the curriculum already in place. There's a small reword of the science class, as you can see there. And then really exciting change is adding a Theater A year-long course option in eighth grade. We need another year-long option for students. And actually, I've been in the district a while, and this is something people have asked for for a very, very long time. So we're going to partner with our high school theater teachers and some of our theater experts at the middle school. We're thinking about how we might maximize some partnerships. It will be in a classroom, right? We know our middle schools don't have a PAC, per se. But what an amazing opportunity for kids who are highly interested in this to get. And it won't just be stage performance. It will dig into script writing and all of the technical components that exist in theater as well. So we're excited to build that curriculum, and we'll have that for you pending this approval, for approval at the end of the year. for approval at the end of the year. And this should, we had kind of a three-to-four-year transition of our middle school programming. I really believe that this piece, these additions will be kind of the last piece of that, of what we were thinking was that transition into the trimesters with that unblocking that occurred. Any questions about academic programs?
Mrs. Marple, the Strings Experience, how will capacity be determined? I was just reading quickly, I, I remember reading the little blurb about it, but I just wasn't, how are you tackling that?
Well, we haven't had to tackle it yet, so we'll be looking at that. Basically, our fifth graders who come for Strings come to the middle school before elementary starts. So we typically block the middle school Strings teacher's schedule that first period. In, in a couple of our buildings, they're busting at the seams, and we have to, we have to worry about their ability to have, so we had to make an adjustment at one of our middle schools to the days. So the first thing we'll do is look at the schools that feed the middle schools and see if we can make some adjustments there to make sure kids have access to the programming. But if we maximize seats, we don't have, we don't have more space or, or, or teachers for that. So we still have many students who also pick up Strings in sixth grade. And we also have some who, who choose not to do fifth-grade Strings and they do private instruction. It's a strong program. Our middle school Strings teachers do a phenomenal job.
Perfect, thank you.
Mrs. Marple, I have a question over the Becoming a Digital Citizen course, and you're, you're saying you're going to write the curriculum for that. Are we going to make sure that that curriculum is somewhat flexible as things in technology are changing minute by minute?
Yeah.
Is that way we don't have to keep rewriting the curriculum every year, two years?
That's right. That's right. I think based on the feedback I'm hearing, there's, there's, we've got to look at the coding that's in there because I don't think it's flexible enough to, to, to respond to the AI wave, right? So that will definitely be part of it. We need to make room for emerging technologies, to your point. And so my hope is, once we refresh this class, I think, I think we can go a little heavier on that citizenship with digital pieces. We want to look at the vertical alignment of that, right? Some of that lives in health in seventh and eighth grade, but our sixth graders don't take a health class, so what are the pieces that when we backwards map from eighth to seventh that sixth graders should have? Because we know that many of our students have cellphones in their hand, starting in sixth grade.
Just a couple of questions. One is more clarifying. The EL Advanced level, I, I know it says shifting to inclusion model, so does that mean they are general classroom than ELA students?
So, and they can still have some sheltered instruction, but those students are at the high school level, right? Is that the one?
I, I was actually looking, yeah, I was looking, I think it's eighth grade I'm in.
Yep, absolutely. It's, it's still there in high school. Our middle school students, when they are at the advanced EL level, we're hoping that we can get them around peers speaking English, start to, put them in an inclusion-style setting with their peers so that as they move to high school, they're ready for that. So we can provide sheltered instruction in different environments with some cluster grouping of those students. They don't, don't have to be pulled out, and at that level, the team feels that that would be the best option for getting students ready for the kind of learning that they'll be doing.
And my other question was about Theater VIII. It, it was, I don't know, maybe eight months ago that some students came to us at the high school level, wondering if we could partner more with Abbey Theater.
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to ask about that in relation to this and in high school. I'm not sure where we are with that.
Yeah, so I've been working internally on the Theater VIII idea with our teachers, so I haven't reached back out yet. As you know, we met with Abbey Theater this summer and has a brainstorming session. I know they have interest in continuing to partner with us. We have students who are interning there and have interned there. So they are a partner for Co-op and YPA. We know that we can place students who have a high interest in advanced theater there. We are continuing those conversations. We weren't ready to add any type of programming at high school this year. The priority of this Theater VIII was more so important, so we want to get that up and running and then see what we have the capacity to do in the future. Yeah.
And the high school, and just real quickly, we, there's obviously a number of different programs unique across the board. You mentioned about either consolidating, combining different terms as we've talked about some of these classes where it makes sense. What is the, I don't know, I want to say, what's the number? How are you going about deciding when that point's reached, whether or not it's something that's repetitive to some extent in nature, like the Yearbook one, Yearbook two, or, or some of these other programs where it may be a number issue? How are we making those decisions in, in terms of what stays and what, what goes?
Great, great question. So we, when we're doing scheduling every year, if less than 15 students sign up for a course, that course isn't run in its traditional format. So we basically have three choices at that point. We don't run the course, we run it at Emerald Campus, and there's, there's examples of when we've pulled kids from all three high schools to pool them here at Emerald Campus so that we can offer the course, or we start doing what we call co-seeding. So in the case of these English electives, a lot of these are already, we were co-seeding writing for publication one, writing for publication two, and in some buildings, that creative writing. So if, and that's a logistical nightmare. Teachers have three rosters, we have some tech we have to do on the background and to get them in the same class and same LMS, and so it really kind of muddies up our system. So if they end up repeatedly over four year, or three years, we look at three-year trends, if they're always coming together, then it seems like we probably ought to look at it and, and talk with our teachers. So that, that's how we make that decision.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The other piece that we have for your approval tonight is an agreement with Dr. Nihal Dadich. Thomas Elementary art teacher received a $14,000 grant funded through the Ohio Arts Council specifically to host an artist in residence to work 40 school days through the Ohio Arts Council. During that time, she's leading instruction with students in partnership with the classroom teacher, focusing on different forms of folk art from India at Thomas Elementary, and that will culminate with an art exhibition at Thomas Elementary.
And I apologize, this was a late add, even from our agenda review last week. We were with the grant back in August, and we had communication with them, and there was a miscommunication back and forth on getting how much this is going to be, because as you know, over anything over 3,000, the personal service contract, we were not aware. So a miscommunication, and we didn't follow up on making sure that it got to board approval. So we're on tonight because this wraps up before our next board meeting, and this person has not been paid for the work that had been done so far, so.
Okay, any questions by the board? Okay, it's recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the Thomas Elementary student instruction by Dr. Nihal Dadich. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Messick, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Valentine. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigby?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero. Reports from the Department of Operations, Mr. Stark.
Good evening. We have a, we're getting prepared for a very busy summer next summer, and in addition to the, the second part of the Riverside HVAC project, we have four other HVAC projects, and they were bid in two sets of two, and that's on the agenda tonight. The first set, we bid Kaufman and Grisel together. Kaufman is to replace an air handler unit, it's also replacing some existing water heaters, and Grisel's replacing an air handler unit that is end-of-life. It was publicly bid. Client Mechanical had the lowest responsible bid for a contract worth about $649,000. We've also added in a construction contingency for unknown conditions. The next set was, bid out together was Glacier Ridge Elementary and Wright Elementary. Glacier Ridge, we're replacing all the existing air-cooled chiller and associated pumps, and Wright Elementary are replacing same thing, existing air-cooler, chiller, associated pumps, and we're also replacing their existing boilers and associated pumps. And that one, we are recommending H&amp;A Mechanical for a contract worth $1.1 million and a contingency on top of that as well. Also for tonight's approval, as part of our 2023 bond, we were going to replace a number of tracks. This past summer, we replaced the Jerome track, the Davis track, and the Sells track. We just bid out Carr and Grisel for next summer. These projects start on May 1st and will be substantially complete by September 1st. This is complete replacement. And the lowest possible bidder was Byrne and Jones for a contract of approximately $1.4 million to replace the Grisel and Carr Middle School tracks. And lastly, we have three custodial suppliers that support what is a bit of an understaffed staff we have, our own custodials, staff. Two of the people that we're recommending contracts with, we already have a contract. These are updated and just reflect some more protections, actually, for the school district. And one new supplier was JSI Janitorial, and this resolution explains the setup of it, and once final negotiations are done, will be presented to Mr. Kern for signature. Any questions?
I just have one question about track replacement. How, how do you know when it has to be a full replacement or it, it can just be kind of, you know, patchwork and, and just get by?
It's a good question. So what they do is they do a number of tests, drillings, and what they, it's almost, almost like what you do with a parking lot. They drill down and take core samples, a number of them, and it tells what type of ground is underneath. And it was without question, I've done this in the past where sometimes there's a bit of a question. Our tracks were so old, I don't know if Grisel was ever replaced, I know Carr wasn't, there was nothing really left. So which means if you start to peel it up just to put another track surface, it wouldn't have held.
Okay.
So all the tracks we had were in, you know, just real bad shape. Now, the tracks that we're doing now are, if we maintain them right, in 10 years, we will be able to replace the track without replacing the whole, you know, put another layer on top. So that's what we did at Kaufman and Sayota, Sayota about nine years ago, and Kaufman about eight years ago. And in 2027, we're planning on replacing the entire Sayota track because there's no more putting on top of it. We'll do the same thing we did at Jerome, and then 2028, we're going to have to replace the entire Kaufman track. Then 10 years from then, we'll be able to put a layer on top, and 10 years after, probably a full replacement.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, it's recommended by the superintendent that the board approve items 11A through 11D. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Gillis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Valentine. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigby?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero. Reports from Human Resources, Mr. Boni.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, members of the board. Tonight's agenda, I'll start with the certified section. You'll see four retirements that are on. Linda Barrington's going to retire from Thomas Elementary with 30 years in Dublin. Diane Hill retiring from Sells Middle School with 27 years. Tony Kiefer will retire from Carr Middle School with 20 years in Dublin. And then Melanie Unger is retiring from Wyandotte Elementary with 27 years in our district. Most of the supplementals that are on tonight's agenda are for winter athletics and just a few club requests. And then moving over to the classified agenda, you'll see two retirements on and then two resignations. The two retirements, John Felotico is retiring from his position as a bus driver with seven years in Dublin, and then Doty Wirick is retiring from her position as Transportation Secretary with 25 years in Dublin City Schools. We have seven new hires and just a handful of salary changes in the remaining portion of the agenda tonight. The final item is stipends, and the one stipend that's on tonight is a revision to a previously approved one for teacher mentors and adds one more staff member to the group. And that concludes the HR portion of the agenda.
Okay, it's recommended by the superintendent that the board approve items 13A through 13C. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Valentine, second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Messick. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigby?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero. Anything for board discussion, future agenda items? Okay, we are going to move into executive session then. In accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1, the Dublin Board of Education will go into executive session to consider the employment of a public employee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Valentine, second by Mrs. Messick. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigby?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero. And just for public information, there will be no further public action taken by the board at the conclusion of executive session.